10 o'clock if you can stand and join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are going to remove item 2C from the agenda this morning. Has everybody had a chance to review the consent agenda?
With that, I'll approve the consent agenda with the removal of 2C.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. We have discussion and or decision on disaster recovery response. Doug Reed is not available to join us this morning. He did email the board an update on the status of where they're at with the emergency recovery. And I will just read through his bullet points so that we're all on the same page and know kind of where we're at right now. He does send his apologies, he's got a full schedule. Pertinent updates since last week. Debris operation in Minden has concluded. Updates in the daily brief will now focus on recovery. Local declarations for Potawatomi County and the city of Minden have been extended an additional 30 days. USDA approved their declaration through Farm Service Agency and a media release distributed was distribution went out on Friday. Long-term recovery coordination meeting held last Thursday. We are compiling information submitted by agencies who will be participating. Governors expedited disaster declaration request to FEMA for May 21st storm system was approved for a handful of counties. There are many additional counties, including Potawatomi, that are going through the joint preliminary damage assessment for inclusion in that declaration as well. Potawatomi County damages from 521 currently estimated at 5.7 million in public entity response debris cleanup damages to assets. County departments reporting as of this email include risk management, county engineer's office, Nobles Lake Drainage District Sheriff's Office and 911 and GIS. Additional reporting will be coming in for the other drainage districts and the fire departments and regional water. SBA and FEMA remain in Minden. FEMA field teams continue to work around county, some redeployed to Greenfield. Meeting with the federal coordinating officer tomorrow in Minden along with the mayor of Minden. And an SBA representative from Senator Ernst's office will be in Minden Thursday checking in with businesses and operations of SBA. And he advises there is a severe weather potential again for Thursday. That is Doug's report. Which is a great segue into our next agenda item, which is Marielle Anne Alapio, Public Information Officer, Officer, Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. Discussion on the services offered by the Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience to assist Iowa businesses and residents affected by severe storms and tornadoes from April 26th and 27th. All right, so Marielle has asked to present to us this morning on the SBA offerings. Do you want to pull the podium out for her, Melvin? That might be easier with her notebook.
Good morning, everybody, thank you for your time. I just wanted to go over a couple of different things that the Small Business Administration is offering, especially to folks in Potawatomi County. A big majority of what I'm going to cover is going to be from the storms from April 26th to April 27th. Potawatomi County is eligible for all three of SBA's disaster loans. These are going to be federal low interest loans. We offer three different types of business disaster loan. These are going to be available for businesses of all sizes, all sizes and private nonprofits to a borrow limit of up to $2 million to repair or replace disaster damaged property owned by businesses, including real estate, supplies, machinery and equipment. Another type of loan that we do offer is going to be an economic disaster and economic injury disaster loan, excuse me. These are going to be working capital loans to help small businesses, small agricultural co-ops, small businesses engaged in aquaculture and some private nonprofits. If there's any economic injury that they do experience, they're able to go ahead and apply for an economic loan, regardless if they were affected physically or not. The last loan that we offer and we like to share because we are Small Business Administration, a lot of folks think we only deal with businesses, is going to be a home disaster loan. These are home loans available for homeowners and renters to repair or replace disaster damaged real estate and personal property, including automobiles. Homeowners may borrow up to $500,000 to repair or replace any personal property, excuse me, any damaged or destroyed real estate and up to 100,000 extra to repair or replace personal property such as automobiles. Home loans are going to be a interest rate as low as 2.68%. Business loans are as low as 4%. And for economic injury loans, it's also as low as 4% as well for rates. Loan terms are going to be about 30 years. A big thing that we like to share is going to be for the first 12 months, it's going to be zero interest, zero payment. We do that just because we want homeowners, business owners to have some time to get back on their feet. We'd hate for you to worry about paying everything all at once. And of course, for some homeowners and renters that might have just pulled out another loan, we do also offer refinancing. Refinancing is available for those loans as well. Another big thing is we do also offer mitigation loans. Just an extra 20% will be added to your loan for any mitigation purposes. It doesn't necessarily have to be tornado, it can be for flooding as well. In regards to the most recent tornado that came on May 20th to the 21st, Potawatomi County is one of the counties that is listed for us at least for an economic injury disaster loan. So those are the loans that don't necessarily target physical, but if businesses that are operating kind of see damage economically, they're able to apply for that. And the deadline for the May 20th to 21st is going to be February 24th for the economic injury loan. For the most, the April 26th to April 27th loans, we're looking at deadlines for physical damages on July 15th. And economic injury loans is going to be February 14th for that. Loan survivors looking to get a loan can visit any of our open centers. We have one open up in Minden for Potawatomi County. But if it is more convenient, they're more than happy and welcome to visit any of our DRCs and our BRC open up in Douglas and Washington County as well. Over in Nebraska. They may also visit lending.sba.gov to go ahead and visit and apply for loans as well. Otherwise, if there are no questions, thank you for your time.
Can I pop a couple at you? You mentioned low interest loans quite often. Are there any grant opportunities for people?
SBA is going to be loans, but I believe they can also refer back to FEMA for any grant opportunities.
If they were able to acquire a low interest loan, would that cover their deductible on their insurance?
That one is going to be more in depth with any of our loan officers, but I can, we also have a customer service number that is a little bit more in-depth and knowledgeable on actual loan processing. I only have the bare minimum, so I do apologize. But if guests do have more, survivors have more questions, it's going to be a 1-800 number, so 1-800-659-295.
These home loans, are they for low, moderate income or all takers?
Anyone, anyone that might have been affected physically.
Okay.
Through the, the.
From damage to total destruction, okay.
So are the loans actually with SBA or the government, or do you go through your local bank and then you guys are backing the loans up?
They'll be through loan companies that are processed through SBA, but they'll be federal loans.
Oh, they will be?
Yeah.
And you'll hold them for the 30 years or whatever?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so say they have a loan now in their home. Can they refinance close to 100%? Take the old loan and fold it into this new loan?
Too sure of the percentage, but they are most definitely eligible for.
Okay.
Do you take into account insurance companies, individual, individual insurance companies? Off with them and get an assessment from their, their insurance?
I believe if they qualify for a certain amount through their insurance and they choose to take that, we'll just deduct that amount from your SBA loan.
So Marielle, you've covered a lot of information in a short amount of time, good job.
Thank you.
But I've also mentioned that our session is recorded, so anybody can go back and read and review the text again and, and understand what it was that you were explaining to us. Wonderful. Have you been getting a lot of people from Minden?
As far as I'm aware, at close of business on the 27th, we've approved up to 200, a little over $200,000 in loans.
200,000?
That was throughout the county. Or all the counties. So including all the counties that were listed on the disaster, so Clark, Harrison, Mills, Potawatomi, Ringgold, Shelby Union, excuse me.
You said 200,000?
Over 200,000 have been approved as of close of business on the.
200,000 loans.
Dollars in loans.
Okay, that could be one house, so.
So far, but we're working on processing everything.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Good news. Thank you.
We read the administrative public health for a public health update. So I have submitted two sheets for your views today. One is the update that we give to the Board of Health. It's our bi-monthly update of our activities. It's also listed out some of it with the grants, so it's going to correspond with the other one. I'll kind of go through that as to pull it all together for you. To go off of the grant update sheet, the majority of these are the grants that we have under the Board of Health for their signatory authority.
We have a handout for that. For the should.
Yeah, just.
The grant. It's in the packet.
There you go.
It's scroll far enough, thank you.
Okay, I have an extra.
Nope, I'm good.
The substance abuse grant for the Board of Supervisors is also listed in this list at the bottom. For the grant update, I'm going to start towards the bottom of the sheet. We have the, two of the pieces at the top, the pool tattoo and the septic pumper inspection. Those are split between public health staff activities and then the environmental health. It's just annually, it's very consistent annually on what we take in and bill for. The next two, the PAVE and the COVIAD and the Iowa West. So the next three, those are closed grants. We have processed them through to completion. They're only listed on the sheet to show what, what funds we've received in this fiscal year. So COVIAD had, that was through the National Association of County and City Health Officials. We, it was one that we had to actively seek out. That had 12,500 that was received in this fiscal year. The PAVE grant is also through NICO. That was an original grant of 150,000. We received 71,500 in this fiscal year. And then the final reimbursement is, is part with a scholarship for Maria Torres to present at a conference in Washington DC. So I guess along with that, even though we've had a grant with them that we're working on closing out, they still reach out to us and say, hey, we've got extra money, do you guys want to come to a national conference and share what, what you've done with your project that was funded through this grant? So it was a great opportunity for us. And then back at the top, the LPHS is the Local Public Health Services Grant. The majority of these are through Iowa HHS. That one is, that grant funds public health activities. So it's a base grant through the state to support health departments. And we can bill to that grant for the majority of work that we do. So our disease investigation, reporting, supporting the office, supporting the Board of Health. All of those activities are billable back to this grant. The fiscal year '25 was an amendment that was submitted at the end of April. That was for $210,000. So it went up about 16 or 14,000 dollars from last year, which is significant for us. Most of them kind of slowly decrease for our grants to the state. This one went back up a little bit.
Those local public health dollars, those are the ones that if you get an opportunity to talk to one of any one of our state representatives, that's the one that the state keeps, you know, they keep reducing our amounts. Every county in the state gets local public health funding from the state. And at one, at like the height of it, you know, we were receiving around $500,000 a year in local public health funding. And it has dwindled all the way down to where, you know, I think our contract amount may have been 198.
190.
To start with, and then, you know, they'll give you an amendment, brings it up to 210. But you talk to one of our state representatives, that's what Marie and I would constantly do every time we see them, is to please, you know, increase or at least hold steady our local health dollars.
Those are distributed to counties per cabinet then, or?
Yes.
Is that federal dollars that come to the state or is it all state dollars?
I believe that those are state dollars, because we have other contracts that when we get federal dollars from the state, it's broke out within that contract to show you where that source is coming from.
Maria, can I ask something?
You bet.
The preparedness.
Yes.
From Mills County.
Yes.
How's that work?
So the preparedness is a grant from the State Department for 12 counties. And one county gets to apply for the contract for the 12 county region. This one is for this, it's a, I think it's a five-year contract through the state. They've done an amendment for this year for the current contractors because they're not ready to push out a new RFP for everybody, a request for a proposal. And then it will be, it'll be open for anybody to apply. I've already spoken to the bureau chief at the state level about Potawatomi County applying. So we would be the contract holder for the 12 counties. And then they would submit billing to us.
For the next period of?
The next five years after this one.
Okay. Thank you, Maria.
The, the HIV grant for that, that one's a little bit different. Most of them are on the fiscal year. The HIV grant, so we have three grants that are on different billing cycles or different funding cycles. The HIV grant is on a calendar year grant. And then that's the one that Matt was talking about where amendments will come in as federal funds are received. So the original contract will be lower and then when we get through different billing cycles or funding cycles in the federal, federal year, we'll get additional funds throughout the year that'll be added to that as amendments. Immunization is a very small grant through the state. That is to fund activities. It also goes along with the Vaccines for Children's Program. So that we're able to vaccinate uninsured, underinsured American Indian, Alaskan natives up through age 18.
That happen with our nurses over here?
Yes, yep. The response grant. The response grant is a lot like the preparedness grant. That's where the majority of our COVID funds came in through the state. You'll see that on this one, the, the amount on here last year was considerably higher. The only reason that this one is so high currently is because we were closing out those funds. So that $285,000 was reimbursed and they come in as separate budgets. So that one's been closed out. The only budget we have remaining under that is the $45,000. Because all the previous budgets were pretty much just for COVID funds that came in and they were all closed out. This one does not necessarily carry funds. The state will notify you that they have money for a project or if a disease comes up, anything that needs response, then they will do an amendment and put money in there. It is not an annual application process like the others.
So what do we do with the 45,000?
The 45,000 is bridge access budget and that has to be spent before the end of the calendar year. Basically, that money is to improve immunization rates for COVID-19 and influenza in the county.
Are we given many COVID-19 shots anymore?
Not really, no. No, and then. There will be a push in the fall again when flu shots go back out. And the people are spending more time back inside, getting to prepare for the holiday season and family gatherings inside.
Are you hearing much about bird flu these days? I hear so much in the news about the current bird flu situation.
The, the only update we have is what Matt sent out last week.
Right, so we're communicating that with all of our veterinarian population in Potawatomi County and trying, and reaching beyond just because we know that there's other vets that cover animals within Potawatomi County, just on how to report activities that they come across. You know, when once, we will get notified of a need to respond from the state. That starts off, the state will call down to EMA, we'll have a meeting over at EMA. They handle the disposal of the flock because they have an onsite incinerator that they bring out now. And then our portion of it is they handle communications. Really, we communicate out their education materials to our veterinarians, to the local public that might have small backyard blocks or larger bird populations. And then obviously with the increase in activity now into the cow milk, then that's what we've been concentrating on with, just to make sure that our vets understand that if they come across something, this is who you contact and when.
But no activities.
Did you say send cows, man?
Yeah.
Good. Do we have many dairy farms here in Todd County?
We have had an increase in people selling raw milk, which is.
Okay. Understand.
The tobacco grant application was submitted at the end of March. And that one stays exactly the same for funding. We subcontract with Heartland Family Service. They do education in the council school districts where our education is further out in the county. The Wise Guys Program, that's Personal Responsibility and Education Program, that's also on your other handout. We are waiting for the announcement from the state for funding for next year. So have not heard back from them just yet, but they, they've been doing some minor, well, they've been doing some major restructuring at the state, but there's also some minor restructuring going on within divisions still as they've done their internal alignment. Title 10, Title 10 and WIC are, cover the same six counties. And their, their monies through the state. The difference between Title 10 and WIC is that the, the WIC funds are, come from the feds to the state and then the state distributes them just like it does with our HIV grant. So let me go back to my line. So Title 10 had an amendment that for $102,898 that was billed out. That was for the April through March contract, that's also off on the billing cycle. That was billed out and we have the new contract for this current contract year with them. It's not a calendar year or fiscal year.
Is that federal?
No. I mean, not, at least not in majority, it's not, not solely federal funds.
Just a weird yearly cycle.
It is, yep, that one's, that one is definitely off for us. Makes, it always makes it easier if it matches with the fiscal.
Yes.
Fiscal year. And I'll try to keep this brief. So the WIC grant, the original contract that we had for WIC and for those same six counties and family, or Title 10 family planning was 716,000 roughly. In May, we got an amendment of 76,000 and I apologize, this isn't on your sheet. So to bring it up to 792,744 that we have. We are, we have been reimbursed 351. And we are waiting payment of 54,000 and we have about 387,000 for the rest of the year. But this one goes through September 30th, so we're right on track. Because this one follows the fiscal year. And then, grants, grants to counties, they're also doing restructuring with that contract. That one is going to change to the private water well grant because the, the name makes more sense. That's what it's for, it's to protect our groundwater, to test our drinking water, and to renovate wells and to close wells and cisterns just so that, that we have those protections in place. They are doing a state code change right now and it's going to reflect the grant requirements because that one used to be with Iowa HHS. The grant is still with Iowa HHS, but the authority over it, as far as the inspections, the testing, all of that is through the Department of Inspections, Appeals and Licencings. When they did their alignment, they split that piece off to dial. But good news, the codes, the code is going to change and it's going to be less than a page long. Be considerably shorter. Sunscreen is one that we get annually through the Iowa Cancer Consortium. We just sent in an application, very simple process. They send us roughly three bottles of sunscreen. And we are partnering with the county parks to get those out. We take them to the events with us so that people have those and they're aware of them to share that information. Last year's, what we had left over from last year, we did send to Minden for the response teams. And then the substance abuse. So we made, with the substance abuse grant for the Board of Supervisors, we made our final adjustments as requested by the state to our application and she said it should be approved. We're just waiting to hear back.
All of these reoccurring?
The majority of them are, yes.
Which are not?
I, I would say the ones, the NICO grants at the bottom.
Okay.
For COVIAD and PAVE and Iowa West Foundation, those are ones that we had to actively seek out. And generally with these, these are, the majority of these are five-year contracts with the state and we have to go back through and do an annual application for the new funds with a new budget and work plan to stay on track through those five years. If there, if the state has additional funds that come up that we're not a partner to but would benefit our area, they will call us and, and say, hey, we forgot these monies, what do you guys think?
You got a pretty good working relationship with the state.
Very much so, yes.
And those NICO grants really did help elevate Potawatomi County Public Health to a national stage on those. And they came back and offered us further grant opportunities because of the relationship that we were able to build with them. So what you saw happening at national conferences, you'd see those highly dense population centers up there speaking, you know, new, how did New York City do something? How did Denver and those areas? And then it was, but also within those video listings, then you would have Potawatomi County, Iowa up there. And so it was a really good experience for our staff. I think it helped elevate the department as a whole. We need those things because when you look at the public health rankings that get pushed out from the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, which is what a lot of employers and people like those use those, we're ranked really low in the state for public health outcomes. We're, I think we're 95th now as far as public health outcomes were. We had gotten ourselves up to 90. To gather that national attention for Robert Wood Johnson Foundation to look at us for funding and they see us at conferences like that, speaking, presenting on what activities we're out there doing, then they're more than likely to consider funding applications from us in the future. So we're always actively seeking those opportunities with them.
Grant management is a huge process.
Grant management is a huge process. Do you do it all yourself or do you have a team?
Uh, we, each person that works kind of works under their own grant. And then they, they manage the work plan and their activities and I oversee it and work with them to make sure that we're in alignment on the right path. And then our Melissa does the billing.
Yeah, thank you for the update. That was really informative.
Yeah.
I think the last thing we want to make sure we update the board on real quick is animal control and the on-call uh piece of what's been going on. So currently Maria handles all the on-call uh from Monday through Thursday. So if there's a officer assist call or something like that goes on during the week, Maria is the one responding to it. I'm the one responding to it on, when it comes on the weekend and anything from Saturday or Friday night through Sunday. Uh, thinking back about the reason on why did Potawatomi County have animal control on-call, what was going on? It was really the kind of Sheriff Danker in his office driving those things because they needed something, some help with the animals when they were arresting people and they had an animal with them. So we went down to the sheriff's office uh last week and met with Sheriff Brown and his team down there. The kennel and things like that are still in place at the sheriff's office. And so we're gonna make arrangements to put a doghouse down in there, uh food and water bowls, make sure that they have a supply of food and stuff like that. Because the system that we currently have is just not sustainable for Maria and I to be doing these things in the middle of the night and then coming in here and working through and on the weekends. We tried to offer incentives to employees that we currently have. Those employees, they did it for a while, but they get burned out on it pretty quick. We're not getting any applications in even with the increase in pay that we've done. Uh, so I think from now, you know, I gave them, I told Sheriff Brown, you know, you got about two weeks before we really kind of make this transition. And then on, you know, if they arrest somebody, they'll take the dog down or the animal down, they'll put it in the outdoor kennel that they have down there. We would then make arrangements on, you know, either Monday or then, you know, the following day, whatever the case may be, to pick up that animal and transport it to uh, the shelter at that time. It's really gonna be a quicker turnaround for their deputies. Sometimes those deputies are out there waiting up to two hours for somebody to respond. You know, they might be all the way out on Walnut sitting there. They've arrested somebody, got a dog sitting in the squad car, they're just waiting on somebody to show up there. Doesn't really make any sense to keep them out of service that long when they can drive in, drop the dog off at a kennel and return right back to service. So I think there'll be a quicker turnaround on that part of it. And it's, you know, their concern obviously was, you know, are these, you're not coming up on an aggressive animal. It's obviously a domestic animal. It's sitting in a car with somebody before. It's gonna sit in, you know, sit in their squad car and transport with them, should be just fine. Um, you know, if, um, we'll have to work on the other pieces of it, but happens if we come up on injured animals and those things. We're currently working on how do we, how are we gonna handle those and rewrite those things? But um, just to make sure that you were all aware that that's kind of the path that we're looking at right now is.
You, you would think that as many animal lovers as there are out there, that there would be people jumping at the chance to become an animal control certain thing, so.
You would think.
I was surprised.
Yeah, that's the.
Do you deal with the pit bull that's mad? Hey, that's so much uh.
Maria, what? On, on that report, which is, which is great, is, is there a way or another Tom, you can put in there where it's um either federal calendar, um yearly calendar or state calendar?
Yeah.
So you follow me?
Mm-hmm, sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can definitely do that.
They all end, I mean, this looks great with that remaining balance of six hundred and some thousand. If you're thinking, well, that's into the county calendar year. Yeah, versus if it's the, what, December or September, so. Thank you.
I will. You bet.
Maria, a couple real quick ones.
Matt.
Um, you've been pretty busy with your outreach program. Do you feel it's making any impact?
I do.
Awesome, okay. I, I expected a, a one-word answer to that. Um, last question, can you give me a ballpark number of the employees that work in public health that are funded by these grants?
I would say.
If, I mean, if you want to just get back to me, that's fine too.
Fully funded or partially funded? If you want to talk partially, everybody in there bills to, I was gonna say, everybody involved in there bills to some, bills their time to some portion of the grant. I would say that we probably have.
About fifteen people. If you take, you gotta take out the recycle center. Animal Control does a little bit of billing uh to the grant, but you have to take the recycle center, so.
There's probably three fully funded. But this is everything.
Oh.
We'd be three.
We have quite a few people that are fully funded. Is that, I can get back to you on that for sure, if you'd like.
I mean, it, those, those grants are important because we need to keep those people.
Yeah.
I mean, I know a lot of them. They're pretty good people.
And the programs are important for the citizens, yeah.
Yeah. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Maria. You bet. To Matt Wyatt, Director of Planning and Development and Cal Strub Zoning and Land Use Coordinator. Public hearing on development agreement with RMP eighty-seven Development LLC.
Motion to open public hearing.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion by Bell and a second by Shay to open the public hearing on the development agreement with RMP eighty-seven Development LLC. Melvin, will you call the roll, please?
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors Wickman.
Aye.
Mel.
Aye.
Shay.
Aye.
Jorgensen.
Aye.
Open a public hearing?
This is for the housing development that is on McPherson, just to the east of Cloverdale. Uh, twelve lots, one of them is the old farmstead, so it's already built out on, it's gonna be eleven buildable lots.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak with regard to this, either in favor or against?
Mark Kenwright, two-three-nine-seven-four Pioneer Trail, uh, here to speak in favor. Uh, wanna thank the county board and the planning department for their consideration on this TIF agreement. Uh, there's, it's difficult to make a development project profitable in the current construction and, and land price environments. And we're very short on housing, so your, your support of this and, and helping Wayne to, to get it across the finish line is greatly appreciated. And particularly appreciate all the help of, of Matt and Pam in this process.
Thank you, Mark. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone on the team's connection that would like to speak? If so, raise your hand and you'll be admitted into the room. Don't see anything, do you? Close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion by Bell, second by Shay to close the public hearing. Melvin, will you call the roll, please?
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors Jorgensen.
Aye.
Shay.
Aye.
Mel.
Uh, Wickman.
That brings us to action on the RMP eighty-seven Development LLC development agreement.
Susan, can I ask a couple questions?
Yes, you may.
Hey, Matt, this um on um item three on the annual appropriation, I'm gonna call it B three. And in that section, it calls, it talks about twenty-two semi-annual payments. What page are you on?
I'm on page four.
What section?
B, should be on page four.
Yeah. Yeah, the annual appropriations or payments. Okay, I got, I found it. I'm here, checking with it.
Yeah, okay.
There's that uh, that paragraph after the um annual appropriation says in any given fiscal year, the Board of Supervisors determines to not obligate the then considered appropriated amount. What does that mean?
That you decide not to appropriate funds towards a project.
That would be TIF money, correct?
Correct.
Tim, I believe that's a state wording. It happens within the city TIFs also. That was a big deal for Crescent when we were doing a TIF out there. They were concerned about that very sentence right there. And the, I believe that is a, something to do with the state. If you so choose not to make your payment for TIF, they can, they can do that. We, we can do that. But then who's gonna want to tip and who's gonna want to build? That was one of the things that was brought up for Crescent. And I saw that in there again and I think it's just the way the state puts that in there.
Why, why would the, why would a future board make that decision? Why, why would that decision be made, period?
I can't think of a, I can't think of a situation in which it the board would make that, because I mean, if you read further on, it's a determination of the Board of Supervisors to not obligate funds for any particular fiscal year's payments shall not shall not render this agreement null and void and the developer shall make the next succeeding submission of the developer's estimate. So, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't. I guess if there were no houses built that year, so you're not obligating any funds towards the project. Uh, you know, you can't expect payment if there is no homes being built.
I tried like heck to get you guys to take it out of our development agreement on Pioneer Trail and was similarly informed that it was a state-required language. I, I don't know if it's to protect the board if you run into a tight budgetary year or something like that where you just can't make it, but yeah.
It's state-required language.
Yeah. Yeah, that was what was explained to me when, when, and that was what Brian was saying.
The wording really all comes from the attorneys, I don't know.
What's that, Matt?
So the wording really all comes from the attorneys and I, I don't.
Tim, that's in every TIF I ever done. There's been cases where there are multimillion dollar TIFs on big commercial projects and it's within the city, that subject annual pro, annual appropriations, which scares the developer. And.
It should scare.
Yeah, and it's been told to me it's a state mandated. And so I've done it um probably fifty or a hundred times and it's drawing that attention on, especially on large ones. People say, what's that language? We don't want that language. Because people, sometimes you can, you can amortize a TIF out and borrow against it too. I mean, uh, so with the annual appropriations, it gets interesting. So, but it's a, it's been in every one I've ever did. I've never had anybody go back on it. But I agree with Matt. A TIF is not a gift. It's subject to the burden of, burden falls upon, a lot of people don't understand that. The burden falls upon the, the developer building homes to create property taxes to get back. If he builds some homes, there is no money. So I think it's a tool that puts a, a little burden on the developer too, that there's time restraints and things such as that. And it creates development. And Mark said it well too, in today's environment, high interest rates and that. This is a, it's a good tool uh for you guys and everyone to keep development, sustain and keep going within reasonable. Probably, you know, large, large developments are rare in this time of economic times, so this size is pretty uh, pretty good. Pretty fair and reasonable development, I think. Cause, you know, we have a lot of people, bent trees fall, cloveries fall, and I think this area is popular. It's proven popular to uh help uh create. But uh, there's a lot of uh buyers out there today locked in three percent, fifty percent of the country that has three percent loans isn't buying. So things like this uh really, you know, help the risk, you know, you can do spec homes, things like that, but you gotta create development. But then annual appropriations, I, it's been brought up, I mean, many, many, many times.
Are you, are those, any of those lots sold?
Two. Besides uh Mr. Peterson and his wife, they're gonna build one, one they're holding off, but uh, we are waiting, I think we'll have, I think we'll build, you know, hopefully three to four homes a year. I don't know. I mean, that seems reasonable. And um, and I think, and it's capped at four hundred thousand and that's reasonable. And so it's not unlimited TIF and unlimited time. There's some, you guys got some restraints on that.
I'll move resolution forty-three dash twenty-two-four.
I'll second that.
I don't know.
No.
Nope, nope. We're just approving the development agreement first.
Oh, alright, well, I'll do that for you.
I'll second that.
And the development agreement, I believe, was where the ten years was put in was that, was kind of right. You know, for the two.
I believe it would be eleven. There's twenty-two payments.
Yeah, I know, but it said ten.
In case, where's that at?
So I was saying, I read this this morning, I'm just, or is it, is it in the resolution? That's why I was.
Just got maybe with the taxes and arrears, uh, property taxes and arrears.
No, I just, I know I saw it in there. I just uh so is it in the resolution or in the development?
In the annual appropriations, top of page five, last paragraph there, is that?
It says ten years?
It does say ten years. It just says no payment shall be made under this agreement after June first, twenty thirty-eight.
It said hallucinating.
Or the four hundred thousand, whichever comes first.
It is, right.
There are additional. Oh, the, the term that's right on page twenty-six of our packet, which is page six of the development agreement. The, the terms, that'll commence on the commencement date and on the date when the last payment is paid. We have a motion by Wickman and a second by Shay to approve and authorize a chair to sign the development agreement with RMP eighty-seven Development. Melvin, let's do a roll call.
Okay, uh Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisor Shay.
Aye.
Mel.
Aye.
Jorgensen.
Aye.
Wickman.
Aye.
You like to throw a loon out there, don't you?
If you're ready, if you're ready.
Motion is carried. Alright, now we bring up Matt Wyatt, Director of Planning and Development and/or Pam Cal Strub Zoning and Land Use Coordinator. Discussion and/or decision to approve and sign resolution number forty-three dash twenty-two-four entitled Resolution Approving Development Agreement with RMP eighty-seven Development, comma, LLC. Authorizing tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement.
So move. Okay, just, just so, I'm, I'm not hallucinating. On, in your write-up, you said that.
Step before this thing, ten-year clock.
Yeah, it said a ten-year clock starts when you bring it signed. You know, that's why.
That's what, that's what I was saying to you. I wonder if you had a person there, I guess.
Yeah. So, just wanted to make sure on that. And then that uh annual appropriations follows the, and the payments all follow the uh, MI, LI, MI, L, MI money too, right?
Correct.
Those are paid at the same time to the city?
Yes.
Okay. That's a pretty good deal.
The reason why they're paying to the city is because in the joint agreement with the city council plus, the city dictated that they wanted to be the recipient of the LMI funds from this project. That was the only way, one of the conditions of signing off on the joint agreement.
It's part of the ten-mile agreement, right, or the two-mile agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this, that, those funds will go to an LMI project, it's just an LMI project will be, which, I mean, it makes sense. You're gonna get low-income housing in your jurisdictions, in, in the city of Council Plus, in your small towns. So they're gonna use it towards an LMI project in Council Plus.
Someone just got their tax bill.
Alright, so we have. Alright, so we have a motion by Shay and a second by Wickman to approve and authorize the board to sign resolution number forty-three dash twenty-two four. Melvin, will you call the roll, please?
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisor Bell.
Aye.
Wickman.
Aye.
Shay.
Aye.
And Jorgensen.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Hope they fill fast.
Thank you, everyone.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Matt and Pam.
See you, everybody.
Bill.
I think, I think everybody should sit down in a meeting and see all what you do.
Thank you.
Great, back each time. Other business, Melvin Hauser, Auditor and Jeanette Johnson, Executive Assistant to the Board of Supervisors, discussion and our decision on digitizing the minute books and the drainage district information.
Start it.
You can start.
Well, we've, uh, looked at two different companies to digitize the minute books. And, uh, one was pretty expensive, the other one was much cheaper. Do you have the prices? We did, uh, Arca Search, they're out of Minnesota. And we also chatted with, uh, Microfilm Imaging out of Omaha. And they've done a lot of work for us, uh, scanning a lot of the.
They've done the majority of the work for the recorder as far as all of their stuff. And Kathy and Andrew for the document imaging, they're the ones that have been doing all of the work for the recorder. Their prices were, are a lot cheaper. For the nine-bound books that we have, it's two hundred and forty dollars each.
How much?
Two hundred and forty dollars each. For the eighteen pinned books, they're seventy-two dollars and fifty cents each. So approximately three thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars to get all of our books up to date and digitized.
And they, and they'll be searchable also.
Correct.
How many years does this go back? They'll go back to, uh,
The very first book that we have here.
First book.
Yes.
But those that were written in and cursive are not searchable. But anything that was typed, and they started typing around in the twenties.
That's what I was thinking.
I think, and then they'll be searchable, uh, uh, index somehow. Oh, we are worse.
With all these tornadoes and stuff, I thought about that and I thought, well, what if we lose our history?
Well, and I mean, thankfully, we have them down in reporters' books now. So they are, they're fireproof safe, but obviously if they're damaged. But they are in the basement now. At least they're not on this floor.
Melvin, is that in your minutes or that's our minutes?
Well, the, according to state code.
You keep them.
The auditor keeps the minutes, but, um, Jeanette has my permission to do it on my behalf.
Is this in your budget?
I didn't put it in the budget for this.
Okay.
But, uh, I think Mitch had some.
We had some money aside in the gaming fund for both the recorder and for the board's minutes already.
Okay.
This previous fiscal year that we're currently in.
Okay.
For the drainage, he does not have the.
No, I'll, I'll talk to, uh,
He doesn't have the documents yet on those parts.
We, we'll do the minute, we'll, we will do the drainage books at another time.
And I know Jamie Peterson has talked to me. He's really looking forward to having all of the drainage information. But it would really help.
Okay. With that, I'll make a motion to approve everything except the drainage district information at this time for three thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Second.
You said bring it up to date is what you said.
Well, currently, right now, if you go out onto the internet, we have back to what, nineteen ninety-nine that you can search. So it would be anything that we have downstairs and then they will put it all in one document so that it would be searchable.
Who did the up to ninety-nine stuff?
Well, I do it on a, every time we put in minutes, I bring it up to date.
What system is that?
It's just that on our, it's on Mint Chip as far as we upload it onto Mint Chip so that we have everything there. It's just a PDF that I keep.
But I think, were they gonna take, uh,
Does this involve IT then to?
Yeah, David sat in on the, on the.
On the meeting.
On the meeting. He recommended this one, which was.
Correct.
Surprise. I think the other one has a, a search capability that's a little more, uh, refined or involved, but it's way too pricey, I think, for, for what we need.
Good.
Yeah, cause their proposals came in close to twenty-four thousand dollars.
The microfilm imaging comes with an annual fee of six hundred dollars.
Six hundred dollars, correct. And that would be obviously taking our existing every year and getting them so that they would be searchable.
That's six hundred dollars per?
Not per book, just annual.
Per year. What's, why do we need that?
Because what they'll do is every year when you submit your PDFs, they will put it up so that it's completely searchable by word.
Well, when you put it on, um, on our website.
It is, it is searchable.
So I, I don't understand why we need that then.
I think it'll be brought up to date in regards to having the full packet. It's how I understood them. So like you will have every single year, right now, we have to search by year. This would be a complete database.
If you wanted to look at something, uh, or you or Mitch or anybody, or even, uh, planning and zoning wanted to look at something that happened in, uh, two thousand and five, it's searchable. But you have to go back to two thousand and five to find that resolution that was passed and, which takes a lot of time.
Correct.
But with their system, uh, you type in the word, uh,
They'll have all the years.
It will find that in that year. It'll be a lot easier to find.
Yeah, if you don't know the year currently, then it takes forever.
Yeah, and if you don't even know the year. You might know the decade, but now it's searchable by word. Where what we have now, it's searchable by year.
So this will keep that capability ongoing.
Yeah, yeah. And it's not, the public doesn't really use it very much, but it would be, uh, internally. What you use would get made for, or.
GIS.
GIS, anybody, any department heads would be the ones that use it mostly. Yeah, in the public, but they wouldn't, you know, uh, use it a lot, but.
And then obviously, we have all the history.
So thirty-four hundred and sixty-five dollars plus six hundred dollars a year?
That's the, the six hundred dollars keeps it, uh, if I remember right, you could, uh, not pay, but that was, uh, that was something that you could use or not use. Um, the capability, if you didn't really want it, you didn't have to pay it.
I'm assuming.
I'm not explaining that, uh, very well, but it was a, it wasn't a mandatory cost.
Who's a user?
Who is a user? She is, anybody that comes to, to, uh, Jeanette and says, uh, I wanna check that resolution that we did back in two thousand and five.
Or anybody who would want to get online could do a search.
I'm assuming there'll be a contract that we enter into.
I'm assuming so, and, and I can certainly have them come back to a board meeting to discuss this further too, as far as.
Didn't you send in one of those?
Yes.
Yes, you did.
And it was like six months ago.
Yeah, that, that was.
This hasn't been on priority list.
Right, right. We kinda tabled it until after we got through all of the budget.
No, they, they've got a shop over there on Twenty-Fourth and.
Yeah, they're located on Twenty-Fifth and Hardy Street.
All the books over there and, otherwise, uh, the other outfit would have to bring in a crew and set them up or haul them to St. Paul or something, but, um, but it's, it's just way too expensive. But, uh, it's just something that you have to do in our digital age is get things and.
Searchable.
Well, I, I certainly think that's a reasonable cause. And, and on top of it, because, you know, why, why have different capabilities for certain years and then ongoing years, you would have to do a different process? That doesn't make sense to me at all.
Well, my motion was for the thirty-four sixty-five. I did not hear anything about the six hundred and I'll stand with the thirty-four sixty-five agreement.
So we can, uh,
So we're not doing, we're not doing the six hundred then, is that what you're saying?
At this time.
I, I think we need to see the contracts so we can see exactly what's spelled out. We give for that six hundred dollars per user.
I don't know which contract you wanna look at, but, uh, but we can, when we bring that contract back and Jeremy or Kurt can, they can come back and give a little more.
The different, the contract different than, um, what the proposals are that we've given us already?
Well, basically, this is just a letter.
Right.
I mean, this is just a letter in regards to what the costs were. This isn't the actual contract.
Okay.
And John had indicated that he could come back to.
Yeah, I just, I want the definition of a user.
Okay, right.
Who is that? How many people is that?
Well, it would be anybody who would get onto our internet.
So we have to pay two hundred dollars if I wanna get on?
No.
And Shawna wants to get on?
No.
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 See, that would be spelled out in the contract.
The county would, I understand the county is the user and anybody.
Anybody who's getting onto the internet would then be able to do a search. It doesn't, it's not per user.
That is per.
I know, but I don't think that's what the word.
Just, I just wanna get that, that nailed down. We know what, what.
We can, if we get the contract, we can, we can have them come in with contract and, uh, explain it a little better than my bird-like brain can.
So, so we're approving the, the initial costs and then we can, we're gonna talk about.
That'll bring us up to date.
Annual cost after that.
I think you need to just, you need to just do the document imaging as far as the provider move forward.
Right, right. When we, when we get the contract, they can come back and answer some more of your questions.
Well, how about let's just hold off until we get a contract?
As long as we know which direction we wanna go.
Prove this up to today, correct, or up?
Correct. I can get ahold of John and have him come back in with the contract so that he can explain the contract in full detail.
And that would be the six hundred dollar deal.
Well, and anything else that you guys have questions on?
Well, cause the, the nine-bound books is two hundred and forty each.
Right.
So that's two hundred and forty times nine. So it's not just three hundred and forty dollars and sixty-five cents.
The bound books are harder to scan because.
Correct, because they can't take the pin out.
They can't take apart, and then there's the curvature at the binding that they have to account for. But on the pinned books, they can take them apart during one sheet at a time.
So did you do the math? The nine times two forty and the eighteen times seventy-two fifty?
Right, so it'd be two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars on the nine books. And then the seventy-two fifty for the eighteen would be one thousand three oh five.
This isn't time-sensitive.
No.
So I think, I think we're gonna, just get a contract before we do anything and.
Yeah, I think you should, I think you should want the discussion to be able to move forward with microfilm imaging solutions and not with Arca Search.
Correct.
That's just the discussion.
This is the same as the recorder?
Yes, it's the same company.
And they scanned all the, uh, stuff for payroll and they, every year they come in and scan the, uh, claims uh, for Becky and Dixie.
And then Melvin was gonna work with them for the drainage districts in regards to getting prices on those.
Yes, I think, uh, I think Arca Search.
I mean, now, does it make sense? I mean, do we have one, two, three, my here, and we have four contracts with these people already? And does it make sense to have just one contract with them for the county?
Um, they always charge by the sheet. And so I, we could ask them that and be a good question for Kurt.
It'd be cheaper.
Would that be for different budgets though?
Well, then we can still break it out for the, the budget, but it's not really a good, uh.
That's something I can ask John on, when I call him, to set up an appointment.
Cause we use them, uh, we use them every, for, uh, the claims.
Coming over for trips and different times and stuff and doing different, so I don't, can't. Be interesting to see those other contracts, I guess.
So Brian, do you wanna amend your motion just to move forward with microfilm imaging system?
Maybe just, uh, or just remove the motion. We've pretty much got a, uh, idea that that's who we wanna go with. Like Mitch said, it's more of a discussion than that. When Jeanette gets hold of John and Kurt, why they can come in and answer your questions.
I, I'm okay with them coming in. I would table that if, I would resend my motion. Okay. And we could, uh, have him come in then. I'm good with that, but I do like the doing that.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I think that's important.
And they did a, and they do a little, uh, demonstration. He could spring in a demonstration.
We've been through that before, yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Jeanette.
Good project.
I think Jeremy.
I think it's important.
Let me just answer some of these questions better than John could. Yeah.
I'll get ahold of them.
Yeah.
Alright, committee appointments. Um, I attended the seven-one-two board meeting last Thursday and they're still working forward with their board merger with the Council Plus Chamber of Commerce. They did agree that they were going to keep their, um, members the same. So that means they would still have an ex-officio board member from the county Board of Supervisors. I was kind of wondering what their plans were or our seat, if it was gonna be resolved or not. So they're still moving forward to keep it.
Good, good.
And then last Wednesday, I met with Iowa West, Advanced Southwest Iowa, Iowa Department of Economic Development, Mendon Mayor, Mendon City Council, or City Clerk. And we talked more specifically about a contract with McClure or a Mendon City Planner. And they're going to enter into a thirty-day contract with McClure to identify the scope of what the city planner would do to help, um, the businesses and help the property owners as far as getting back together. The GIS department, I mentioned the mapping that Jamie and Chris had put together so far and they were really excited about that. The guy from Iowa Department of Economic Development, that was Debbie Durham's department, he was fascinated with the GIS map that I showed him, just a little one. And he was like, can we get this by this and this? And I was like, um, I'm sure we probably can't, so we're, we're working on getting some scope out there. One of the concerns that was talked about was property owners who don't live in the city of Mendon. They might have property they own that was rental property who may take the insurance money and just walk away from the property. And we were looking at different avenues for putting a bucket of money together or, or engaging with their Mendon Industrial Foundation to create a place where we could put funds. So when those properties came up, that they can go to the city clerk and say, I will deed over my property. I'm not gonna rebuild. I'm not gonna mow it. I'm not gonna care for it. I'm leaving the city. And the city would have the option to pay for it then and there and to make it a viable lot again. Um, here again, that was just a preliminary discussion. That was with a lot of big, big picture thinking and we're just kind of looking at what's possible there. Um, it was exciting having Debbie Durham's department represented at the table because you could just tell he was driven towards economic development and helping to build back Mendon. So I thought it was a very good meeting. And I think that's all I have. Brian, anything you wanna report on?
To road made out on, uh, that St. Paul's Church, Dumfries Road. Was at the Whitea meeting. I went to the vibe meet out at Walnut. Then we all went to the EMA meeting on Thursday. And then there was a conservation meeting on a possible new director that we went to, so.
Great. Jeff?
Yeah.
Kim, anything you want to add?
Map, map, um, um, they said they would, you know, help wherever they can with any of these, um, disasters and stuff we got going on and they're, uh, working on their budgets, you know. See what, uh, is available. Sounds like they're getting some funds for some road projects around the counties, five county area up here, so.
Susan, Will, did you discuss the SBA helping with those rental homes, low-interest loans? I I was really excited about that.
No, I did not.
Okay, I just wondered if they helped them or not to keep the housing within the small cities and around Crescent. They do? Okay, I wasn't sure if they did, if the rental clause, you know what I mean, owning a rental house.
Yeah, I mean, that's part of what she said when she was up here, is that they help with the rental and homeowners and home rent, uh, oh, property owners, homeowners.
Okay.
It's kind of confusing. When you think of SBA, you think of just small businesses and they've morphed into something more than that.
We've lost a lot of homes around Crescent. Pretty messed up too. Okay.
All right, did anybody sign up for public comments?
I didn't see anything.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
By Wickman, second by Shay to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.